So let's go ahead and we'll call the meeting to order at seven oh two. Are there any additions or corrections that anyone would like to make to tonight's agenda?
Katie, we are going to have a brief executive session at the towards the end of the meeting.
Gotcha. Okay, we've got, we've got the executive session on on there, so we'll plan to make time for that at the end. Anything, anything else that anyone wants to make note of? Okay, um, all right. Well, then with that, as we for, well, I think, I think pretty much all of the trustees here have they have, have been through at least one audit cycle of where this is usually the time where we invite the village finance director to take a few minutes to join us to briefly go over the audit and sir, the audit from the previous fiscal year, answer any questions from the trustees. And then we'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the audit report. But yeah, I was gonna say, let's go ahead and Bettina, I will go ahead and give you the, give you the floor. So that way we can get, get your portion out of the way. You can go and you can go back to enjoying your evening.
Thank you. I have the most exciting topic of all.
That's why we put it first.
So I will share my screen. I have a few slides. Don't get scared. Can you see that? We're good?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. So this year's annual financial report for fiscal year ending 2022. So the audit document itself has about six sections. I'm not going to go into depth or detail here, but just to give you a brief overview, what those sections mean and how they apply to the financials. So there's the first part, the independent auditors report that provides an opinion and relays information about the basis of the opinion. There's what we call the M D N A management discussion and analysis, which if you're going to read anything in any audit, pick that part out because it's going to be a great summary that's written by in-house staff and comparative analysis from year to year. And it's just a great little summary piece of if any part you're going to look at. Then there's the basic financial statements, which will review net position and fund balances. The fund financials would provide some more detail related to specific revenues and expenditures and reconciling activities to net position. And then there were notes to the financials, which give you require, which are required to disclose policies and benefit information. And lastly, but not least, the required supplemental info, which gives some budget to actual, some historical contribution information and per G F O A will build to ten-year requirement. So I think we're at year seven in those schedules right now. So the independent auditors report for this year for Village and Library presented an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that we can get. So basically they found no misstatements, no, nothing really inherently wrong. Let's just say the best opinion we could receive. Compliance was generally accepted with accounting standards according to the general accounting kind of standards. So statements were presented fairly in all material respects. And that's what that first section or letter from the auditor states. Management discussion and analysis. In brief, so if you looked at that, the financial condition has strengthened. The library's total net position of 2.1 million as of April 30th increased about $54,000 or 2.7% from 2.05 million as of last year. And the unrestricted net position increased 143,000 to 383, and I'm rounding those numbers from 240 in 2021. Overall revenues were greater than expenses. After the depreciation expense, the net investment in capital assets of 1.7 million decreased by 88,000 from the disposal of age books and media in excess of the cost of the new materials and property tax revenues of about 1,016,000. Program revenue is up about 56,000 and other revenues of 32,000 were greater than the expenses of 1,051,000, accounting for the increase in that position of about 54,000. So I'm in the management discussion and analysis, rather than go through each financial statement, was a presentation of net position for year 21 and 22. I went back and looked at 17 till 22 to show you year over year, kind of where your fund balances have changed and where some of the expenses have changed and what's driven some of those changes. So the biggest players in those changes happened in 2017. And I believe the 59,000 had to do with an HVAC replacement. And then the 2019 expense of the roof. So other than that, if I were to add those two back into your fund balance, you'd be sitting at about 67% funded rather than the 39% that you are now because of those capital expenditures. So overall, pretty consistent in your expenses and your revenues. And if you want, I mean, I'm happy to send this sheet over to you if you want to keep it as a reference. If you'd like. So then graphically speaking, where does that put? The blue line is blue bars are fund balance, total expenditures, and then the funding percentages as they went through from 2017 to 2022. And you can see that dip from, from basically the roof and the capital expenditures that occurred with that. And lastly, the notes and required supplemental info. So the first part of those notes is a summary of significant accounting policies. I won't bore you with them. You can read through them if you'd like. There's nothing that changed from prior year in regards to those accounting policies. There's a section that talks about statutory deposits and investments, receivables and a summary of capital assets, long-term obligations related to pension and defined benefit pension plans and other post-employment benefits related to O P E B, affectionately known as O P E B, which is the accountants posting future liability related to health insurance expenditures for employees on the books. And then lastly, risk management, which the library, it'll, it'll go through a brief section or paragraph and explanation on that is part of Irma, which is part of the village's risk management pool. And nothing significant, no changes there either. Still part of the same pool. So that's my really quick version. Hopefully that was okay. If anyone has any questions.
Bettina, I think those documents and the fund balance would be useful if you could see that. Oh, trustee's got a copy of that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I'll send the whole, the whole presentation over. You can take those slides and use them. Sure. That's the question I always get from our board. Where do we stand? What's the bottom line? You know, what, what does our fund balance look like? And our policy, which I don't believe would flow to the library, but ours is to stick around 50%. We're heavily overfunded because we've done a lot of savings for capital investments with regard to Green Bay Road and that project that's off in the future, hopefully 2025. So that's where a lot of that fund balance is being stored for, but you're close to those numbers as well. And you've increased in the last couple of years since that rough redo. So that's, that's good news.
Bettina, you said the village tries to stay around 50%. Are there any benchmarks that we might look at either for similar institutions like the library? Aside from that 50% as sort of a guidepost, or is there any kind of feedback you can give us there as to what is, I don't want to say a safe level, but what is sort of customary?
So I have to, I could certainly find out for you. That's a really good question. Because, you know, we've ridden a lot higher than 50% funded. So if you looked at our audit, you'd say, why did she say that? Because we've been riding at 80 plus, 80% plus for the entire time that I've been here, which is five years. Um, so I can look into that and see, you know, most of the time that fund balance number is driven on so many months of expenditures for operating. So you look at having six months of, you know, operating expenditures. And, and what does that come to as far as a fund balance number? Ours is about 50%. So I can certainly get you an answer for that. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and Matt and, and and everyone was hasn't been on the board for a couple of years. I don't know when, but in the last five or six years, the board voted to maintain a balance, a fund balance between 25 and 75%. So that, that was the goal that we would not exceed and we're not go below. And obviously we took a big hit with the roof, but you know, we're still kind of working in that ballpark. So.
Got it. Thank you.
Does the village have a, a range that they?
No, it's, it's a flat 50% and like I said, it's, it's been a lot higher than that. Due to capital projects that are kind of pending for a number of reasons, COVID and supply and grant money and just things that haven't quite come together yet. I don't know if you wanted to talk about the levy as well right now, or if you had any questions about that after yesterday's meeting. I'm kind of jumping your agenda, but I didn't know if you had anything that you wanted to ask.
Well, I was going to say that, that's actually a good point because my, because I know from talking to you, you said that there, you know, there might be some discussion at the, and that the village board may not approve the 5%. There wasn't any discussion that had approved it. So I was, I was surprised and I was just wondering if
Wondering why?
Yeah, I was wondering if you had any insight on that.
So yeah, so prior to the regular village board meeting, we had a finance committee meeting. And part of what was asked during that finance committee meeting was that I present data that would show them how many contracts we have that are tied to CPI escalators, what those costs look like in year 23 and 24, and what the increases would estimated be. And, you know, I came up with four solid contracts that had CPI escalators and about 20 overall that had caps at 3% in other numbers. And the sum of all those increases in costs for those contracts were $450,000. So when they looked at that chart, they couldn't very well say we you know, it justified, it justified the, the means, let's just say. And, and when the regular meeting came through, there was no question.
Gotcha. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that, that is good to know. I was, I was just like, well, that, that was easy.
Hi Bettina, this is Bonnie.
Hi.
Apologize. Hi, I am on my phone tonight and having difficulty figuring out how to open my camera. So I don't think you guys can see me, but I can see you.
We can hear you. That's what's important.
Perfect. Perfect. And unfortunately, I think I'm going to be trying to recover my laptop after this meeting. Anyway, my question for you is, so if the village approved 5% last night, does that mean that it's really represented as 1.05? Like usually the levies represented, is that right? Okay.
Yeah. So we approved the maximum per P T L, even though we're home rule. And we've, we've made that resolution to never exceed that 5%. So it's 5%, which will actually slightly exceed because that does not include new construction. So it's going to come in and probably around 5.02 or three somewhere.
Okay, thank you. That's the question I was looking for is how does that relate to P T L and et cetera? Yep.
And was it announced that the library is going with the P T L figure that you passed along?
At the, at yesterday's meeting, do you mean? Or, um, I had um, yeah, I was gonna say I was, I was only there for the village, for the full village board meeting. So, and there wasn't any, it was just an approval of the levy. I had told Bettina that that was probably the, that was what the likely recommendation was going to be, but that I'd follow up with her once the board officially voted to approve. Voted to approve the levy.
Yeah. Which is the recommendation of the finance committee to the board tonight.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions? Some of you are still new to this process. Any questions to, for Bettina on this P T L levy, CPI and so forth?
Kathy, it's Bonnie again. I guess I would ask the same question. Bettina, that you mentioned that the village looked at, do we, the library need to look at how many of our contracts have CPI escalators in them? Just to get a better feel as to is the 5% roughly 5% enough? Hopefully it is.
Yeah, it's a good question. And that's a very good question. And that's something that we can look into. We don't have anywhere near the contracts that the village does. They're, you know, elevated maintenance and Murphy and Miller do the HVAC. But yeah, those, that's something we can do. And we just began a cap study, which Katie, do you know where we are in that process? They probably started in October.
Oh, was it for the, um, for the, the survey of the building? Was that, yeah, um, they Ingberg Anderson had a couple of guys out in, I mean, it was, it has been since I have been acting as interim director. I know that much, but I have not heard any updates from them since then on any follow-up reports or results from, from that. I'm not sure what, not sure what the projected. Yeah, um, yeah, I can, I can follow up with Sean.
Yeah, but I think Bonnie, that would help us more in planning for the future, which is what the purpose of this is. What does need maintenance and so new contracts, that's something to look into, but.
Right. And I will say that all of them that we have, none of them would meet the 5%. They're all not to exceed 3% because a 5% number is very unusual. So you usually 3% is a big number and so it's not to exceed three. So all of them fell in range, but still the total sum of the increases was much, much more than what that 5% gets us in the levy. So.
Bonnie, to, it is not a super specific answer to your question, but I will say that before he left, Eric did create a very, very, very rough first draft of a potential budget for next year. I haven't had a chance to dive into that in more depth and start taking a closer look at it, but I did use it when figuring out the when looking at the different levy increases and the 5% is, does should, should cover our expenses for, for next year. Based, based on the, again, these were very, very, very rough numbers, but yeah, it's, it was sufficient to cover the expected costs. A smaller percentage, like if we went down to three, would cover, would theoretically cover the projected expenses, but it would give us a lot less wiggle room. So we decided, the finance committee decided to go with the 5% as well.
Thank you.
And Bettina, just one more question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The CPI is tied to inflation, so the CPI is likely to go, and there's always a lag. I know that. And then there's values in there. So will we be seeing the CPI increase in the next year to two?
So the actual CPI number that was given by the Illinois Department of Revenue in their statement for our purposes was 7%. But the max and the cap is five.
It's five, yeah.
So I mean, do I think, I mean, it's not going to, that's a, I would assume it'll just sit at five for probably another year because we're going to end in December with a higher number again.
Gotcha.
Right. Sure.
All right. Well, Katie, unless you have something else or Matt from finance. Are there any other questions about this or?
Nothing on my end.
Bettina, it's our intention to, for finance to make a recommendation to the full board tonight. I don't, I mean, barring any discussion to the contrary, I think that we probably will be proceeding as Katie told you, and she'll keep it posted on that.
So in your, in years past, all I'd get from you after that would be a formal request in the form of just a letter saying, you know, this is the amount and that would be included then in the lobby on the 28th, when I do the presentation at the hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's what Eric had mentioned. And I think I saw something in his previous email. I'll just, I'll just give, send you an updated version from what he sent last year.
Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, I think, um, I think we're, I think we're good on that unless. Okay. Yeah, I'm not hearing any last minute questions. So thank you very much, Bettina. Really appreciate it. And then I will follow up with you this week with the official request.
Thanks. Nice to meet you and I.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
You as well, Bettina. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Bye bye.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would, um, I, let's go ahead. I was gonna say, let's going with the audit. Since basically the only thing that the board needs to do is, I mean, you just need a motion to approve the, the audit report, saying that we received and acknowledge it and all of that stuff. So I would be looking for a motion to approve, to approve the audit report for the 2122 fiscal year.
A motion to approve the audit for the 2122 fiscal year.
I'll second. This is Bonnie.
Okay, motion from Matt, second from Bonnie, all in favor?
Hi.
No, Katie, to be safe, let's do it individually.
Do you want to do it individually? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's required, but let's cover a basis.
It's okay. Um, all right. We're just going to go in order. What I've got on the screen, trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi, figure out my camera and I on the.
Excellent. Okay, uh, motion, uh, motion carries. The audit report has been approved. Do we want to continue the levy discussion now or should we wait for further in, in the agenda?
Matt, are you okay if we proceed with it now?
I'm fine with, we proceed with it now. I think I can paraphrase and, and detail our discussions. But certainly I'm, I'm open to waiting if we want to see if Bill's able to join in a few minutes. Don't defer to the judgment.
Lots of, I was gonna say I'm, I'm fine either, fine either way.
Yeah, why don't we move ahead and then with, let's hear from Matt and then we'll get back to the agenda.
Yeah. So in, in the course of reviewing, at the last finance committee meeting, it was determined that we were comfortable with our expense forecast and revenue forecast subject to the 5% P T L increase. We had determined that we would prefer to, to be in lockstep with the, with the village. When it came to, to the P T L request, there was some opportunity, I believe, given some changes in, in different cost structures or where those costs were occurring, that it, that it could have been conceived to be a little bit higher than, than the 5.2% that the actual increase would be greater than 5% that nominal amount such that it would be 5.2%. The, the 5% that we could request, given some changes in expenses that we would use in the denominator, I guess, would effectively make it 5.2 higher. The, the village had the same opportunity, I believe, to, to pursue that, but we determined that we would rather hear from the village. And if in fact they were going to stay consistent with that 5%, that that would be our recommendation as the finance committee to the broader board.
Uh, yeah, and I mean, just as quick summary, I mean, it's, I mean, it's pretty much all of the village organizations are in the same boat, school district. The park district, we're all facing the same inflation, the same increased costs for supplies and potential contracts and everything else along, along those lines. So everyone is cognizant that this is, that this, you know, this will mean a larger than usual increase for, in the property taxes for, for Lake Bluff residents, but it's unfortunately what the situation that we're all, that we're all grappling with. And so in order to continue, continue providing the same level of services without having to look at cutbacks, this is what needs to be done. So.
Right. And keeping in mind that the library piece of that tax pie is quite small.
Yes.
Our impact is the least of any of the municipalities, so, of services. So I think it's a good plan. So. Any discussion or questions for Matt?
The only thing I would add there is, is additional consideration we had was in the, the broader context of, of what we're seeing with inflation in the economy or at our homes, if anyone's gotten their recent heating bill, that this would be probably most palatable at this time and, and in fact, a, a smaller increase than what is manifesting in other areas.
Yeah.
Due to inflation.
All right, um. Okay, so should, I was gonna say, do we want to go ahead and motion to approve the levy extension? I was gonna say, I know I've, since, since we're not sure if Bill's going to be popping in later.
Abs, any further discussion from the trustees, questions?
Yeah.
Without, so I, I would, Katie, I would suggest you go ahead with the vote.
Okay, um, so then we would be looking for a motion to approve a levy extension of 1,084,000 dollars or 84,364 dollars for fiscal year 2324, representing a P T L increase of 5%.
Would you give that number again?
I will give that number again. That is 1,084,364.
Okay. I thought you had 800,000, which wow.
No, 84,000. I very well may have misspoken. Yeah, I, I am a librarian. I do more with words than I do with numbers.
I'll take it.
Yeah, no kidding.
All right. So one more time, Katie will give the number for the motion and then someone.
Yes. Yeah. So we're looking for a motion to approve a levy extension of 1,084,364 dollars for fiscal year 2324, representing a P T L increase of 5%.
Also a motion.
Motion from Matt.
Second.
Second from John. All right. And for this, we will definitely do a roll call vote. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Okay, uh, motion carries to approve the levy extension and the 5% increase. So I will send that information to Bettina, hopefully either tomorrow or Thursday. So that she gets that right away. Okay, um, so with that, we'll go ahead and move through the rest of the agenda. So item number four, opportunity for anyone, any member of the public to address the board. We've got our regular staff members on hand as well as Renee, our, our incoming director. Are there any, anyone care to make a statement to the board?
Mini golf is on December 3rd.
Yes, mini golf is on December 3rd. And I will also, I will send out a, a link with opportunities to sign up for volunteer spots for at various points throughout the process, we are definitely looking for volunteers for setup the day before. Helping the day of, take down after the event, it's going to be, is going to be bigger and better than 2018. And we're going to need all the help we can find.
What are the hours of it on the 3rd? Did you say the 3rd of December?
Yes, 11 to four.
Okay.
And the, and the library will be closed the entire day to patrons to give us enough time for for setup or to get everything in order before 11 a.m.
Okay, I will just go on record as saying it was one of the coolest things I've ever been to in my life. It was, I wish my children, I'm very glad they're grown up, but I wish they were young enough to be there that day enjoying it. However, I got two lifelong golfers in the family. I think they would have loved it had they been there. And one of the really cute things, it was a lot of kids going through and after a while, a lot of the dads figured out that, wow, this could be a competition. So it got to be a lot of interesting competition between dads and sons and daughters and sons and daughters and mothers and so forth. It really was great. And, and aside from all that great competitions, so the creativity that went into was extraordinary. So volunteer, because it's fun. If you can't at least come and walk through it, you will be amazed at how, how amazing. I wish we could package this and sell it because it's just such a cool thing. So please come and join. And thank you, staff. I know it's a lot of work, but it's, it's a great thing that you guys do. So enjoy, everybody.
Yeah, we have definitely, as I think I've mentioned to a few people before, like at any given point, you were going to find for the next few weeks, you're going to find some, a staff member gluing something, cutting something out, painting, assembling. There's, yeah, this, this year, we're, we're, we've, we're, we're pulling out more stops. It's going to be really cool.
A quick question about the event.
Uh, I think, was that Katie or Jillian?
Uh, Jillian was the one who mentioned it, I was the one who just finished spoke, speaking.
So I, I'm just curious if there's anything done in partnership with the Lake Bluff Golf Course for this event, um. Or if that's something that the team's considering for December, maybe it hasn't been done in the past. Hey, I know they have merchandise in, in the clubhouse.
Um, we did not specifically reach out to them, and I, I, I know that we had talked to them about clubs. And, um, seeing if we can use something there, but that isn't something that they have available for us to use. Um, what we are doing is partnering with the chamber, so the chamber is going to be promoting the event with It's a Wonderful Life. Um, and that's definitely something we can consider and look into for next year. Uh, this is also sponsored by the Friends, so the Friends are, um, covering the costs and will hopefully be there for the day of the event for. Um, manning it for donations as well. If there's anything I missed, Anna, let me know.
No, I was gonna mention that it was a Friends sponsored event, um, and if anybody knows any high schoolers or middle schoolers who need volunteer hours. Please send them our way, it's a great opportunity, and we are in partnership with NHS over at the high school, so they get credit for this.
You know, um, we might consider reaching out to Troop Forty Two, um, the local Boy Scout troop out of Grace, um, I know they have. Myriad volunteer requirements for their badges and whatnot, um, so that might be a good, um, good source for additional volunteers. And Regis is, uh, actively involved there.
You wanna send my way, um, that would be, I think, right up their alley.
Sure, um, Regis Charlo, um, or, um. Romaine Wojcik, but I can get you their contacts if you need it.
And you know, Romaine, Matt, Romaine's a former trustee. So I'm sure he, and he, a great trustee, so I bet he'd be very excited to get involved in this, and if not, Tom, Kathy said I expect him there, so.
Okay, um, moving on through the agenda, the number, item number five would be the approval. Of the minutes from the, uh. From the October eighteenth, uh, board meeting, um, let me, I can, I'm just gonna go into screen sharing mode real quick. Okay, share, okay. So for the, the minutes from the October meeting, are there any, uh, amendments or changes that anyone, uh, wants to make? To the, uh, to the minutes from the last meeting? Okay, hearing none, um, I would be looking for a motion to. Approve the October eighteen minutes.
I still move.
Katie, it's Bonnie, I'll second.
Okay, so motion from Kathy, second from Bonnie, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, minutes have been approved. Um, and then that takes us to the financial reports, and I'll just go ahead and stay screen sharing. And as always, we'll enlarge this tiny, tiny. Tiny, tiny print. Um, okay, so for the, uh, financial reports, um, a few items that, uh, I wanted to mention. One is that we did receive a significant, um. We received a significant amount of property taxes on, uh, in October, in the amount of two hundred sixty eight thousand dollars. Or two hundred sixty eight thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and seventy cents. Which is fair, uh, which is comparable to the deposit made in October of twenty one. Uh, we also received over two hundred thousand dollars in the property tax revenue. Um, this brings us up to, uh, eighty one point one, eighty one point nineteen percent. Of our, uh, projected, uh, property tax revenue for the fiscal year. Um, this is comparable, this time last year, we were about, uh, seventy eight point four eight percent, so we're right around the same area. So we should be, um, we're, we're still on track for that. As always, um, as, is, is a recurring theme, uh, each month, our passport fees. Continue to be astronomical compared to, uh, compared to this time last year. Um, as you can see, we've, uh, brought in, uh, over twice as much, um, as we did. Uh, this time last year. We are almost ninety percent of the way towards our, uh, very conservatively estimated fifteen thousand dollars. In passport revenue, so we are set to blow past that probably, um. Looking at the amount, we could very conceivably blow past that in November, um, for, in, in this month. Um, we are just, the passport appointments are, they, they are, they are the hottest ticket in town. Aside from the Taylor Swift tickets that have tried to go on sale today. Um, but yeah, we are continuing to see just a record high in the number of, um. Passport appointments, the number of applications processed, um, so that's excellent, uh, excellent news, so I've definitely wanted to make sure to highlight that. In terms of expenditures, um, most everything is, uh, was pretty standard for this month. One area that I did, or one line that I did want to point to, and of course, I can't find it on, here it is. Um, for library furnishings, um, you'll see that. The amount is almost seven thousand, uh, dollars for this month, the majority of that cost is. Uh, the, uh, paying a fifty percent deposit towards the furniture that was ordered for the Stroll Room. Um, the, uh, to, we, I'll have a little bit, uh, more detail when we do the committee report. But, uh, long story short, that, um, we've calculated how much the foundation is paying towards that versus the library. And the library is covering, um, is gonna be responsible for covering the costs of the furniture. Um, so we've got, uh, we've made that fifty percent, uh, deposit, and then we'll be paying the other fifty percent on the furniture. Um, when the furniture order is finished, so I wanted, wanted to highlight that. And then finally, um, bring, uh, bring your attention down here to the. Total number of expenditures, we have, um. We have, uh, spent, uh, forty nine point, point thirteen percent, um. Or we're, we're at forty nine point thirteen percent in terms of the expenditures, which six months into the fiscal year is exactly where we would want to be. Um, so, uh, right now, it looks like all signs point towards, uh, being, being on track. In ter, in terms of overall spending. Are there any questions? Okay.
I scanned back, um. Really, the only thing that's out of line is library furnishings, which we understand why, so we're, we're doing really well here.
Yeah, that's definitely what we like to see everything. Everything within, within the expected norms, so, um, okay, if there are.
Maybe one question, and maybe this is just more for modification, but the, um, are periodicals running ahead? I mean, I know it's a nominal amount, it's nickels and dimes compared to the, um. Compared to the overall budget, um, but I just look at the percentage here of the budget used, is there? Anything we need to be aware of with regard to periodicals?
Um, I don't, I, I have not had anything brought to my attention, um, in terms of periodicals. That is, uh, Lawrence is currently managing that, uh. Uh, managing that budget line, she took over for one of our, uh, for Jen who, who left last year. Um, I don't believe so, um.
Katie, I can, I can answer that if.
Oh, that would be fantastic, Martha.
Um, periodicals are primarily, like, all of the bills come through, I believe, in May, so it tends to be a, a front loaded budget. So I, I think this is pretty typical for what we would expect in a normal year.
Perfect, thank you.
And that makes a lot of sense, thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, so with that, um. Um, and again, and, yeah, with, with that, uh, we'd be looking for, um. There are no further questions at this time, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the, uh, October twenty twenty two financial reports.
Also a motion.
Okay, motion from Matt.
Second.
Okay, second from John. Um, okay, then we'll go ahead and do a broke, roll call vote, um, trustee Meyerhoff. Trustee Zaudi. Trustee Shaw. Trustee Heinzelman. And trustee Church. Okay, motion carries, the financial reports have been approved. And then that would take us to the, uh, monthly checks. Um, again, pretty, um, for the most part, most, most of these were, uh, pretty typical. For a given month's spending, um, a few that I wanted to point out. Um, one of them, if, uh, you may noticed, uh. See, uh, Janie's name on there, um, that is, uh, reimbursement for, uh, the director interviews. For the, uh, when the trustees, uh, went out to eat with each of the candidates, so there's reimbursement for Janie for, for that.
I did seek an opinion whether I should sign that check or not. We decided that it was probably okay.
Yes, cause of the, uh, yes, and because there's a second person signing it as well, I believe. Um, okay, so it does, I just wanted to point that out, um. The, uh, you'll see the, the check made out to Library Furniture International, LFI, for the Stroll Quiet Reading Room. Again, there's that payment of almost seven thousand dollars, that's for the, that's the fifty percent deposit. And then we've got, um, we've got a lot of programming, uh, checks on there, or fair number of programming checks. One that I looked up just because I wasn't, um, familiar with the name, um, I, I, the, Annette Bochnick. Um, and I'm probably butchering her name.
Bohenek.
Bohenek, okay, thank you, Martha. Uh, that is, um, payment for an upcoming program in February, um, for, uh. She's gonna be doing a presentation on A Night at the Oscars with a spotlight on, uh, Best Picture. So that was, that was one I, I took, I took a look at, cause the name didn't register, but, um, but yeah, just wanted to mention that.
Is that the only adult program supplies check in this report?
Um, I know, there's, uh, uh, Chinese intercultural.
I just wanted to be sure, because I submitted all of the check requests for winter at the same time, and I was a little concerned.
Yeah, no, 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 I, that was the only, that was the only one that I didn't recognize the name for, so that was, that was just, just why I flagged it. But you, you've got multiple, uh, checks in, in this, this month. Alright, um, any, um, any questions about the checks from October? Okay, um, hearing none, I would be looking for a motion to approve the checks, uh, numbers. One five three eight seven and one five three eight nine through one five four one seven.
So move, this is Bonnie.
Okay, Bonnie moves.
I'll second.
Was that Matt?
Yes, I was.
Okay, second from Matt, um, and let me. There we go, um, okay, so then, uh, roll call vote, uh, trustee Heinzelman. Trustee Zaudi. Trustee Shaw. Trustee Meyerhoff. And trustee Church. Okay, motion approves, checks, uh, fifteen three eight seven and fifteen three eight nine through fifteen four one seven have been approved. And then that takes us up to the, uh, committee reports. Um, for the finance committee, I know, um, Bill is, uh. I know Bill usually, uh, would take over for this, um. Matt, do you wanna give, I know we talked about the levy, but, um, there was also, since we discussed the Stroll Room furniture. Or the, the Stroll Room funding as well, I don't, if you wanna give a brief overview of that.
Yeah, could you come back to me in a minute, let me just pull up my other laptop.
Um, no, I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll jump to the Human Resources Committee, um, and, uh, Jenny is not here for that. Uh, Bonnie or Janie, do you, one of you wanna give a brief overview of the many HR committee meetings? That have happened in the last month?
Well, we were busy.
Very busy.
Is that enough?
That works.
I'm just pulling out. My HR, let's see, we met, um. On October twenty fourth to go over interview questions, right before we spent a, a good chunk of two days. On the twenty sixth and twenty seventh, actually, in interview situations, we also had met. Uh, on October eighteenth to, uh, set ground rules, I'm just kinda going backwards here. We discussed at that time what the second round interview process would look like, which we finalized on the twenty fourth. And then we met on the thirteenth to, um. I guess this one was, uh, all, all executive session. And that, the, the one before that was Wednesday, Wednesday, September twenty eighth, so probably reported on that already, but obviously, we've been very busy.
And a decision has been reached, so that's.
It was made, indeed, yes.
And, uh, this is funny, I just wanted to, you know, really commend Jenny, uh, the, the chairperson of the. HR committee, she's not here today, but she just did a great job of constantly thinking, what's next, what, what's next, what net, what's next, and. You know, I, I, I think. We've got a good plan, should we need to go through this process again, but hopefully it'll be a while. This process again. And just thanks to all the trustees for their kind of flexibility and short notice, and, you know, it was also nice to kind of be in person and see one another again.
I, I have to say, you know, I, Jenny did a fantastic job of picking up with, with everything, Martha was a huge help, Bonnie, you were amazing. Kathy, thank you so much for jumping in and sort of overseeing it all, and, um, I was just holding on for dear life. Through this whole process. So, um, and I, I just thought, I would, I would just mention, I have a, a, a good friend on the Lake Forest Library Board. Who was just texting me with, with me last night, saying that, um, they are now in the process of. Very beginning of the process of looking for a new director, their director has, um, put in her resignation. And, um, she was agonizing over hiring a professional search firm, and I said, honey. Way to go. Do it. They have a bigger budget than we do. So, um, yeah, I, it was, it was very much a learning process, and it was lovely meeting you, Renee, and I hope to get to know you better. And it was lovely meeting and talking to all the other people that we, uh, that we dealt with, and, um, it was quite a learning process, but. We were busy. Yeah, and I have to say thank you to Jenny for really working hard on this, and she's also working very hard right now on a recap, so that.
very hard right now on a recap so that we do have a, um, and, and, and this holds for any staff. We went, Renee, with us for a very, very long time. But for any staff members, we learned a lot about introducing people to the village and getting to know them. And I, and I have to say, one of the most pleasurable experiences, and I did it three times, was, um, taking a walk through the village with our candidates. I, I really, I really enjoyed that, um. And the history, but also I was sharing the history of our town was important to me, but it, it was in each case such an eye opener to the people that we were dealing with who are all exceptional. And it was a pleasure, so I'm grateful to Bonnie and suggested a lot of touch points for, within the process. And I, I, I can't say enough about our staff, particularly Martha, for, you know, Martha was pretty much email Martha, can we, can you do this? Can you do that? Can you schedule this? Can you schedule that? Um, she was very much a part of putting this together and, um, all of the staff, we, we had feedback from them, which I'm, I'm happy to share with any of the trustees. It was really thoughtful. It wasn't perfunctory. We met someone, this is very nice, blah, blah, blah. It was really thoughtful and, um, feedback from our candidates on the process of meeting staff was very thoughtful, so I, I think we all learned a great deal from this and it was very rewarding. Um, and Janie, I would agree, it'd be nice to have something to do, all the groundwork, but I hope if that's the case, it's as a rewarding process for the trustees because it, it was a good experience for us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, yes, I, um, I know the, I know HR will, will continue to meet as we, as we get through the onboarding, but I don't, I don't think we'll have to meet quite as frequently as we have in, in the last month, in the last couple of months. Um, Matt, do you wanna take a, take us to, uh, the, the finance overview that we have not yet covered?
Sure, I'll do my best here, so, um, bear with me. Um, so we, um, well, we, we had, uh, the, the bulk of our discussion surrounded, um, uh, discussion of the Stro Room payments, um, reconciling the invoices that we had received from, um, from SMC, um, and also, uh, reviewing the proposal for, um, the furniture, which, um, totaled in the neighborhood of thirteen to fourteen thousand. Um, we reviewed that relative to, um, what we felt were fair and customary costs, um, reviewed the additional, um, table requirements that we had included, which would allow for, um, plugs and, and USB ports and things of that nature on, um, on those tables, um, and determined that we were comfortable with that proposal and supported a, um, fifty percent deposit so that we could, um, both, one, get the order processed. I think they'd already put the order in.
Yeah.
Prelimarily, but ensure that we were also able to, um, su- to secure those prices, that there wouldn't be any, um, subsequent adjustment to, uh, to those costs, given, uh, what's going on in the, in the broader environment. Can I answer any questions on either of those two?
I, I guess the only thing I was wondering is, um, last time we spoke, and I can't remember what the context was, it may have been a building and grounds, it may not have been, but, um, there were a couple of tables on the first floor that, that are in need of replacing. Did we put an order in for, for?
We, we have not, we have not done anything with, with those tables yet, where this, um, where, yeah, right now, this, putting a bow on the Stro Room first and then taking a look at to see what, what those options might be.
Fair enough.
This, John, what, what could you, is it, um, what do we, what, what is the furniture gonna be in the Stro Room? I mean, just broadly.
It's, um, four, uh, lounge chairs, um, for more comfortable, uh, for more comfortable seating, um, two small, um, end tables.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Oh, I was gonna say, two small end table style, uh, things in between, uh, in between, yeah, pairs of chairs, there we go. Um, and then there's going to be a, uh, a square study table with a couple of study chairs, uh, in there as well for, um, just a small amount of, uh, workspace for someone to use.
If, if, if you're interested, um, John or anyone else on the board, I do have a copy of that quote from, um, who is the provider here?
LFI.
LFI Library Furniture Incorporated. Yes, and as, as Katie mentioned, it's, it's four very nice looking armchairs, full back armchairs, um, two, uh, what they call Stilex armchairs, which are stackable, um, should we need to reorganize that room, uh, two accompanying, um, side tables that go with those chairs. Um, and then the most impressive piece in, in my humble estimation is, um, is the, uh, the, the broad conference room table, um, which is, uh, referred to as a study table. Um, and that's a, um, what a thirty by forty some inch table that has, um, all the requisite plugs and, and outlets for multimedia. Um, and the, the base of that is all polished aluminum, so that should wear well over time.
Great, okay, thank, that's good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I also wanna jump in and say that, uh, there's an upcoming day when the staff is hopefully gonna have some time. Or not, um, but we're gonna be, uh, moving some furniture from other areas of the, uh, of the library. There's chairs upstairs and they were clean, they were prepped for this temporary assignment, but they will be moved into the Stro Room in the near future for use for the public. And then as soon as the furniture comes, which I think was a twelve week, uh, order.
Somewhere in there. I, um, I still have to reach out to LFI for an update on that, but, um, yeah.
So we can get it up and running and then people can be playing and then we'll substitute the furniture when it arrives. Um, but stop in, it's a lovely place. I haven't seen it with the fireplace on, but this week would be a great time to.
Yeah.
Certainly would. Um, the, the, the balance of the time, um, we spent, um, uh, rever- reviewing the tax scenarios and coming up with our recommendation around, uh, the PTEL and how we wanted to, um, you know, ensure we were in lockstep with the village, so as not to be an outlier in terms of asking for additional funds. Um, we also looked at, at, um, various tax scenarios that, um, I believe Bettina had put together for us, um, that were really instructive in terms of, um, what the estimated impact would be on, um, a typical homeowner, um, given the various, uh, different, um, CPI levels from one to, um, five percent.
Okay. Um, okay, and then with that, um, move to an update from the Special Topics Committee. Um, Kathy, do you wanna take on that?
Yeah, we met in, we met, we've had twice since, um, the incident October tenth, um. So I don't, I guess you probably covered one of them in our October meeting. Uh, we met yesterday, I guess, um.
Yeah.
There's so many meetings. Um, so, um, at the, at the original meeting, we actually, in both cases, we were represented by our council. Um, and, um, we had comments in this, the, the, the public, um, and, um, with a lot of enthusiasm and uproar kind of thing, so we, we managed that well. The, the idea was to just, you know, try to solve the problem, that our computers were in a position that were not, and there are a lot of things going wrong. They, they were in a position where kids were able to view, um, objectionable material. Um, and, uh, the patron was put on a one-year, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm using terms that may not be appropriate, Katie can correct me, but basically a one-year suspension of, of services available in our library.
It technically, I was just gonna say, technically, it's an indefinite suspension with a, with a board review at one year.
Yeah, uh, which, which could con- continue suspension if that was our choice, so, um, so we met again yesterday after a month of, um, you know, what do we do kind of a thing, and we have divided into a couple of groups. One is reviewing policy of other libraries regarding, um, uh, limitation of what people can view, um, the use of filters on their computers, the use of screening on their computers. Um, and also, uh, the placement of our computers in our library so that this can't, won't happen again, or is them far less likely to happen again. So we met yesterday, um, and, um, we are meeting again Thursday at the library to review several options. Staff was great of putting together photographs of potential reorganization of equipment, tables and so forth, taking down the carols, having things a little more open. So, um, our committee, including, by the way, I wanted to explain that Claire Abramson, who is, um, a community member, we wanted to bring the community into the, the groups, as she will be representing the community. She also is a member of the Friends, um, she's a library patron, she has children in the elementary school district, so we thought that she would be a good representation of the, of the community. So Claire will be meeting with us throughout this process. Um, so we'll be walking through the different options for seating, and then Bonnie has begun to break down some policy, data from different local libraries, so we're gonna take some time to sit together and begin to go through that. Uh, it's not gonna be a one and done discussion by any means, but, um, we'll begin to look at what, what other libraries are doing. Um, eventually, it's very likely that any new language or policy will go through our attorney, who, who's very willing to go through that for us. That's always been the policy in the past, that when, uh, when library policy was rewritten, it always went to legal for review before the board approved it. So that's kind of where we are. Um, we will be, it's a process, we're, it's gonna continue, we're gonna do our best to make our library better, better than ever, um, safer than ever and, um, you know, available to everyone, so.
Wha- what's the process, um, at the end of the one year? Is there an appeal or how does that work?
Well, I was gonna say, it's, um, part of the challenge of this whole situation is that we really have not had any, like, there's been one significant issue that I have, that I was in, that I've been informed of, which happened, you know, years ago, where a patron was, ended up being permanently banned from the library. Um, so unfortunately, right now that we don't know is, quite frankly, is, is, um, i- is the situation right now. Um, so that's something that will, that, uh, we will need to, that we will need to determine. Um, the decision was made based on input from a lot of different people from our attorney, um, and trying to figure out try, you know, try, trying to, um, basically establish precedent where there is none, so. Um, so that, that is, that is still to be determined.
So, like, yeah, I assume other libraries would have, would, would have had something similar to this in terms of their experience, maybe we could, we don't have to do it tomorrow, but.
No.
We have time, but, um, you know, just my question is, what happens at the end of one year? Does he have to appeal or is there a review process that goes, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Maybe the attorney is familiar with the, a, a, a process that he can suggest that, uh, we probably ought to put something in place before the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, before the year is, is up, so that we know what we're doing.
For sure, um, we, um, our poli- our existing policy does have a process for any patron who has been, who has had a suspension of library privileges longer than, I think, three days, um, there is a process for them to submit an appeal to the board um, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, so we do have that, but in terms of this specific situation, um, no, I, I agree, we, is something that we will, uh, will want to, uh, we, we will want to shore up before, before the October of next year.
Katie, there, unfortunately, the, um, the patron who was abusing our policy, um, was using an expired library card, which yeah, somehow was accepted by the public computer. Do we know, have we gotten feedback yet on why, how that could have happened and how to prevent that from happening?
Um, unfortunately, I have not had a chance to look into that yet, um, but it, um, it is still on, on my list of things to to look at. I just haven't had a chance to let, in the last month, um, but still on my radar.
Sure, we track that down, cuz that's pretty vulnerable if that's just wide open.
Mm-hmm.
But that's pretty much it for the committee work. It's ongoing, we'll keep you posted. All of our meetings are open meetings, so you're welcome to, anyone, and trust, anybody in the public is welcome to join in and, and join us for the process, so we'll keep you informed and, um, our goal is to just make things better and safer. We're, we already have a very safe environment for, uh, adults and children, but we wanna make sure it's, we're doing the best we can.
I have one question about, um, the, um, Bylaw and Policy Committee, which is a committee that doesn't or hasn't in, in my tenure on the board been, um, particularly active. Um, and would it be appropriate to either hand this over to that committee or have the one person who's not already on the committee, which is John, um, kind of step in and help us and keep it under the, under the auspices of the Special Topics Committee?
Am I the only one left on that committee?
The committee right now is you and Kathy, because at the time we set up committees, I guess we didn't anticipate having to take a deep dive into.
Yeah.
Any policy.
I think Cal was on that.
Yes, she was. She was sort of the, the long-term. I kinda think, I kinda think bylaws comes last. Uh, just from the times we, we've made a change in bylaws, it's, it's after, I would say after Bonnie and Matt do some delving into policy and making some recommendations, that's where we then glance at bylaws and make sure we tighten it up at that. It's, so I think it's kind of the last part of the process.
Okay.
We'll be sure to address it whenever it's appropriate to do so. Maybe John, you and I can look through the bylaws and see if there's anything jumping out that we should address sooner than later.
Okay. But one question, and I apologize if this is kind of a rephrasing of John's question. Are we obligated to review this individual, um, after a year, or is it only if he or she chooses to apply for, um, re- re- uh, reactivation of publishers?
The, the letter that I drafted said that, um, and of course, I, I don't remember the exact specific wording, but it said, um, that the situation will, the situation will be reviewed after one year, so.
Yeah, and Ally LaToya, one of the, uh, the, the woman who was in the library that day with her daughter and her niece, is, was pretty adamant that this individual at one year doesn't have the ability to stroll into the library, so we'll have to address how we, um, manage a one-year review acknowledging that time period and what to do about it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Bonnie, I think you're talking, but I think you're muted.
Thank you. My family is playing a game and they keep shouting in the background, so I, I muted for everyone's benefit. Um, Katie, thanks. My, my question is for you. I, I believe that you, we've determined that this person had a expired library card and that you were in touch with the person's quote home library.
Yes.
Do we know if that person is suspended from their home library or simply expired? I, I'm not sure what informa- I, for me, I know you shared that individual had violated our, um, computer use and general use policies, um. It's cuz, cuz one, one, one option in terms of a, um, review process could be, well, in this particular case or another case, has the person's home library reinstated privileges or not? Could be part of the decision tree.
Yeah, um, it was, I was gonna say, well, they, um, uh, they, the home li- the home library did not give me, um, didn't indicate whether or not this person's uh, whether or not their account had been exp- was already expired, because to just take a further step back, our systems are not, uh, do, are, don't talk to each other, so. Um, frequently what will happen is that, like, let's say someone registers an outside library card in our system, and when we see it, we say, oh, it's expired, and they're like, oh, I actually just renewed that three months ago at my home library. Um, and so that change that's made at their home library isn't reflected in our system, so in that case, we, we contact them and say, you know, what's going on with that? Um, my point in bringing that up is that, um, even though the patron's card was expired in our system, it may not have been, um, at his home library. Um, typical, in normal circumstances, we would just see that as a flag to ask the patron, you know, have you renewed your card recently? If they have, we'll contact the library to get the new expiration date. Um, if they haven't, then we send them to their home library to get that taken care of. They come back and then we update it. Um, so I was gonna say, the, the fact that his account was expired with us is not an automatic indication that, um, it was expired or priv- privileged. um, it was expired or privileges may have been suspended at his home library. So, yeah, it's.
They may not be, um, they may not be comfortable sharing that with regard to privacy issues.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's one of, one of the issues that has come up with this, with this situation a few times is privacy issues. Um, but, um, but yeah, since each library operates for the most part, independent, independently, um, with their own different, different policies and stuff, there isn't a super straightforward answer. But it's, uh, it's something that we can, that we can look at, um, getting, getting in touch with them, uh, potentially. Okay. All right, um. Okay, well, um, well, so that's, uh, wraps up the committee reports from this last month. Um, moving to new business, we have taken care of, uh, approving the, uh, levy for uh, next fiscal year. Um, coming up to old business, um, I had, uh, I put on their foundation report. Um, Kathy, I know we did, the foundation did not meet in November. Um, I don't know if we want to give, uh, just a quick overview of our October meeting since we didn't get to that, uh, last time.
Well, what I wanted to say primarily very quickly is that, uh, we were notified by the Stro trust that we are, the foundation is a beneficiary of the Carol, um, Stro trust and, um, to receive one percent of her remaining estate after other distribution. So we have no idea what that amount is. Um, hopefully it will be available for, that information will be available by the end of the year. So, um, that will be a continued, um, contribution to the foundation very generously from the Stro family. So, um, we're looking forward to that. I'm very grateful. We certainly acknowledge that. Um, and the only other thing was the foundation agreed to make an additional donation of $10,000 to the library, which was done today. Which will help offset the final room charges on the Stro room. So all that we have outstanding, I think is $3,000 balance on the room and 13,000 on furniture, which the library and Bill and Matt and I discussed this last time we met. Um, well, that'll easily be picked up through, uh, budget lines that are ahead of, ahead of schedule for the year. So we're in good shape for that to be able to do that. So that's it.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Um, and then, um, okay, so then that brings us up, uh, to the, uh, interim director's report. Um, I, and I've put this at the first thing at the report. I, I don't want to bring it to the end of the meeting, put, bring out, uh, put a negative note on this, but, um, the big takeaway right now is that, as I mentioned before, staff are really burning out. Um, which is really unfortunate. Well, it's always unfortunate, um, but especially now because demand for library services is extremely high. Um, we are seeing lots of activity. Our programs are extremely well attended. We are seeing demand for, um, an increase in our programming. We've done extra storytimes based on demand. We are doing, um, overflow nights for trivia starting next year because the our waitlist, um, or our, our registration list for our November trivia month literally filled up in three minutes. Like the, the, there is no exaggeration there. Um, with, which is really, which is really fantastic that people are engaging with the library. Um, but it also means that where, that staff are really struggling to keep up with everything else that they've got going on their plate. Um, I've mentioned, we're seeing a huge increase in the demand for passport services. Um, while we're, you know, down a full-time staff member, um, and our, a lot of our part-time staff has had limited emergency coverage availability due to, um, other obligations, work, family, childcare, that's type of thing. Um, and then we've, we've also had, um, since mid-September, so over the last two months, we've had um, four staff with COVID, um, other staff out, out ill for prolonged periods of time. So it's been a lot. Um, and one thing that, uh, I think, once, we keep saying, once we get through mini golf, once we get through mini golf. Um, but once we do get through mini golf, um, we're going to, um, I think, take the month of December to take a, a step back and evaluate our short-term and long-term capacity to take on additional projects and responsibilities right now. Um, because a burned-out staff is not helpful to anyone. Um, but we really need to take a look to see what we can and, and what we can reasonably, uh, manage right now. Um, and I know that's, that's hard for our staff because we, we've, you know, every, we all know, we've, we've got such an incredible group of people here and no one wants to have to just say, you know, and I've, I've hit my limit or, you know, I'm, I can't, I can't continue with this, but proceeding at this pace is not sustainable. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna take a, um, like I said, take a, take a brief, take a step back, look at what we're, um, look at what we're juggling and then see what, uh, what changes we might need to make going into the, the new calendar year.
Katie, are we, are we actively pursuing replacing that staff member?
Oh, it's, it's Eric's, um, Eric's departure.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
Yeah, so I was, I was gonna say Renee, you will be, you will be welcome for many reasons. Uh, at the beginning of the new year. Um, but yeah, with Eric being out, you know, that's extra desk coverage. We've, that's being down a passport agent when we're at, uh, at a historical high.
Alright.
Yeah. Uh, and being down, well, we now, we're back to three notaries now that, now that Anna, um, is officially a notary, but um, yeah, we're, we're seeing it, we're seeing an increase in, in notarization requests as well. So, yeah, so that's, that's the situation, um, overall that, that we're looking at. Um, I mean, I think it's a real testament to our staff that despite all of this, that we're continuing to, you know, provide the level of service that we are. Um, but we don't, I do, I don't want anyone on staff to crash and burn, so.
This is, um, uh, this is a very tangential question. Do we have this umbrella policy cover notarization liability?
We, well, to be a notary, you have, um, there's a bond that we have to purchase. Um, so we're insured through that bond. Yeah, so we're, we should be covered through that.
John's got a good point. We don't know what that coverage is and it may be quite limited. What John's referring to, I'm sure would be a larger umbrella of coverage. That's something we should look into.
Do we have an umbrella policy? I assume we do.
There is an umbrella policy for the village and we're part of that.
Okay.
I don't know. It came up once a few years ago. I don't know if it, it's a great question, John. I mean, we will ask that. Um, and to Martha's, I mean, it's a situation where someone is withholding information on the, the notarization. The basic policy is X dollars, but this is in far in excess of that and we.
Right. I mean, years ago, the notaries really reduced because there were some liability, there were some lawsuits.
We, I know that the, the, um, the bond that we purchased for the notary thing includes an errors and omissions policy.
Right.
Um, I'm sure we have, I mean, I just renewed mine. I can probably pull up the paperwork.
Yeah, it's, it, it's, there are levels. I mean, there's, there's, there's basic coverage and there's some bros on top of that. Let me look into that, John. I'm very glad you brought that up. I can check with Bettina and, um, Glenn and, and we'll find out pretty quickly.
Yeah.
But that's something we should know. We absolutely should know.
If it's not, they, they, I'm sure they can easily write a, put a rider on the umbrella policy that would cover. Are we the only agency that does notarizations in the village?
Um.
Don't think so.
I was gonna say, I, I imagine that the, that the village itself, um, the, they, that a lot, that they have several notaries on staff.
Sometimes the banks do too.
Yeah.
I can tell you the banks have got plenty of coverage though.
That's true.
Probably right.
So, good question, John. Thank you. That's something, doesn't mean we can't do it. We just have to make.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Hey Katie, it's, it's Bonnie. I've had another question for Katie, unless Kathy, you, you wanted to.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so Katie, I know there's a staff in service on Friday. Can you just remind us, um, what the topic is?
Sure. Um, well, in general, uh, we wanted to focus on, um, issues pertaining to, uh, EDI issues, um, issues of equity, diversity and inclusion. So the, uh, the first, um, outside presentation that we're going to be hearing is on empathy and enforcement. Um, this is going to be done by, um, a member of, he is no longer working at the Warren Newport Library, um, but he was a long-term member of their safety staff. Um, and was a twenty, uh, was a recent, uh, uh, he was a recent mover and shaker, mover and shaker is designated by Library Journal on his work on uh, enforcing library policies with empathy and consistency. Um, in terms of how we interact with different people who may be experiencing different struggles in their life. Um, or, you know, just may, maybe dealing with different things and kind of mo, uh, moderating or how we, uh, how we as library staff, um, approach them while also enforcing policies consistently. Um, he was going to do the presentation in person, but his schedule, um, has changed and has prevented him from being here in person. So he has actually offered to create a video presentat, of the exact same presentation he would have done for us in person, but he is doing that for free for us. Um, so that I, um, was very, uh, very willing to, to, very grateful uh, for, for that offer and I'm very glad that we'll have access to that information. And then the, um, second presentation of the day, which will be after lunch is from the LGBTQ Center of Lake County, uh, which will be providing us with a kind of, kind of a foundational, uh, presentation on, uh, the LGBTQ community, um, issues that the community faces, uh, terminology to be aware of and how to create a more inclusive space for staff as well as patrons.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I would like to get back to this, um, staffing question issue. Um, and we all, I mean, everybody in this conversation applauds the staff on what they do. There's no doubt about that. Um, public relations is something we, we do and we recommend with outreach, but it cannot be measured. It can't be quantified. Um, and it can be overdone. In surveys for the library and, and village surveys, there was a village survey about four years ago on what organization the village was held in greatest esteem and the possibilities with the village, the schools, the park district and the library. And the library was far, far above all the other entities in terms of esteem. So the board, we kind of chuckled at it. The everybody loves us. I mean, they love the library. They love the librarians. They love the service. They love the books. They love everything about it. Um, and they love us whether we're everywhere in the village, every day that we doing everything we can. Or if we're in the library being like, you know, taking their books and services. So there is definitely, um, sometimes the enthusiasm of our staff, um, it's cup runneth over. And I think we're sort of in that phase again. We ventured into there between 2015 and 2018 when we started the outreach. And we had to pull back because we were finding that staff was overstressed and that services in the library weren't getting done because we were doing things outside the library community. So that's something that has to be looked at very carefully. Um, and it's hard, it's very hard to pull back on activities and functions that you're loving and enjoying and the community is thriving on. But we only have so many people and so many dollars to do what we have to do. So it's something, I'm glad you're recognizing this and I'm glad you're taking a good, hard look after mini golf as to what you can do. And sometimes it's just doing one thing one year, another thing another year and just kind of dividing it up accordingly. Um, when we run short of staffing, day-to-day um, functions, when we can't provide enough people for, um, passports, which is a revenue line for the library. Um, this calls into question, how do we balance and are we balancing properly? I've had a lot of conversations with people of trivia night. I respect the, the position of the, of the staff on that. I have asked in the past, how much it costs to do trivia night? I've asked that and I've asked that and I've never gotten an answer. Um, and now we're doubling that. So I'd like to know what it costs, what the, what the cost. It's basically staffing time and, and what that, those dollars, um, break down to. And apparently you've made a commitment to the brewery to go ahead and do that. And it's, if it's an expense, we really kind of have to run that past the proper channels to decide if we should be doing it, if we can do that. Or maybe we do that as expensive, something else. There's always balance, but I think what I'm hearing from you guys is, you know, you've, you've worked yourself about as far as you can go and um, God love you for getting as far into December as possible to do this, but we all need that to make sure that our staff is taking care of themselves. And, um, so good luck with everything. Let us know how we can help you. Involve the board and new leadership in your evaluation of yourself because it's good to have other people looking in. Um, I really would like to know the cost of this, the, um, trivia night. Um, and maybe we could get that in a couple of weeks before the next board meeting. So we can find out what is it, what is it cost to produce it and, um, is that the way we want to be going? So, um, that's enough said on that, but good luck to everybody. Just, you know, enjoy your Thanksgiving, enjoy your, your December holidays, but pace yourselves and, and, and ask for help and do the best you can. So you're outstanding. There's no doubt about it.
You're here.
Want to keep you that way.
All right, um, okay, so I was gonna say that, um, that takes me through the, uh, the director's report. Kathy, you said that, um, you want to move to an executive session.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, all right. So, okay, with that, then, um, I would be looking for, oh. Hi Renee, sorry, I saw your hand up.
I know this isn't public comment, but should I leave the room and come back? What would you like me to do for the executive session?
Renee, if you could, um, I don't know which how this works, Katie, if you could help us out. If you, Renee could remain in the wherever it is you go.
You can put me in the waiting room.
Yes, that'd be great. That'd be great. This is gonna be very brief.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, then I will, yeah, I can, Renee, I'm gonna put you in the waiting room. Okay, um, okay, so with that, um, we would be, uh, we'd look for a motion to, uh, move to executive session.
I still move.
Second.
Okay. I will go ahead and.